Next, I'd like to welcome Pastor Randy Edwards of Grace Church to deliver the invocation. Welcome Reverend.
Please stand. Would you join your hearts with mine? Our Heavenly Father, I come to you this evening as these our elected servants and public officials discuss and deliberate the business of our town and community. I thank you for their service on behalf of our town and I pray that you would give them wisdom and skill as they do the work of planning and managing and serving. Grant them success in their efforts to see our community thrive. Would their labor on our behalf this evening be personally fulfilling to them and would you give them joy in seeing their hard work bear fruit and blessing others? Lord, we ask that you would have mercy on our law enforcement personnel and keep them safe as they do the work of protecting us. We thank you for Chief Tilly, for the Police Department Command Staff, for the police officers, communications and support personnel who very often don't get to see people at their best. Lord, I ask that you would bless our police department with a spirit of humility and fidelity and honor and wisdom, courage and love as they do the work of maintaining and enforcing our laws. Have mercy on our emergency fire and rescue personnel. We thank you for Fire Rescue Chief Alderman and we thank you for those who serve as firefighters and first responders. We ask, Lord, for your protection upon them as they run towards danger and put themselves in harm's way to rescue and support those who are in crisis and in need. Lord, we thank you for all those who work for our town, whether they work in government, finance, community, development, public services or human resources. Kernersville is a good place to live, to work and to raise a family. But each person here makes this town better and I give you thanks for them, Lord. This evening, as we do the work of making the good which you have entrusted to us better, we ask that we would be able to speak forthrightly, listen carefully, disagree respectfully, serve graciously and above all, honor you in all that we do and say. In these deliberations and actions of this meeting, may your will be done. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Edwards. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, we have a pretty full agenda, but as mentioned at the meeting last week, there is one additional item to add. This would be under two, so I would add it as 2B and then move B, C, D and E down, renumbering them. So this would be a presentation on the Kernersville Mural Festival. It's part of a spring folly, so the item would be Item 2B, Presentation on the Kernersville Mural Festival. If I could have a motion to add this to the agenda.
Does that move?
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Keith, do you have any questions? Okay, very good. All right, so that's been added. So we're to Item 1A, B and C, which are related public hearings. So on the agenda that you may have picked up on the way in, also displayed on the screen and on our website, is our policy for public hearings. And many of you are familiar with it, but I'll review it very briefly. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attending shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those in favor speaking first, those against speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak and may choose to allow one speaker to utilize that time or may allocate the time amongst different speakers. If the proponents or opponents have not designated the allotment of time, the mayor will divide the time equally. After the opponents speak, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents do not present a rebuttal, then the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. Basically, it's 20 minutes for the proponents, 20 minutes for the opponents. All right, so we've got a public hearing on the annexation as 1A, a voluntary contiguous annexation petition by Brookford Properties LLC for property located at Zero Brookford Road. We've got Item B, a public hearing on the Kernersville Development Plan, zoning docket KDP 72. And Item C, public hearing rezoning, BSC Holdings, Inc., agent for owner, for property located at Kernersville Medical Parkway and Brookford Road, zoning docket K 823, with the uses, pins and more description, again, on our agenda and on our website. We'll begin with a presentation by our public, our community development director, Catherine Garner. Ms. Garner?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The annexation case is related to the KDP amendment and the proposed rezoning tonight. So this has already been advertised and we'll need an action before any action is taken on the KDP and the rezoning. So the KDP first is a proposed change of the land use plan from business center to commercial and it is the one parcel highlighted in red. The associated rezoning case will be presented next. The land use plan defines business center as intended to accommodate a wide variety of employment uses such as office, research, corporate park and institutional and related uses. It requires a unified design scheme including enhanced facades on the buildings, substantial surrounding landscaping, restrictive site lighting and signage, full screening of loading areas and permits no outdoor storage. This site is also in the I-40 and NC-66 interchange Northeast Quadrant Small Area Plan, which was intended for corporate park and industrial type land uses because of the visibility and access from the interstate. The existing commercial and industrial land uses in this corridor and their proximity to the Greensboro Airport make this land ideal for high-quality office and industrial development. This was adopted as part of that land use plan. The land use plan defines commercial as areas that have been established to provide for high-traffic commercial areas. They are located in three separate areas and limited in size to prevent them from overburdening the capacity of the roads and distracting from Kernersville's small-town atmosphere. Staff's analysis on the KDP amendment is that changing the land use plan would be necessary to support K 823, which is rezoning the parcel to GBC as the requested zoning. The proposed amendment to commercial is concurrent with this rezoning and it is compatible with the Small Area Plan. However, the development as proposed in case K 823 is not within the intent of the I-40 NC-66 interchange Northeast Quadrant Small Area Plan, which envisioned industrial and office for this area. Staff's recommendation was denial of the resolution to change the designation of the properties located just to the south of the intersection of Kernersville Medical Parkway and Brookford Road, the pin number provided, from business center to commercial. At the January Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board made a motion to approve the resolution to change the designation of the properties located just to the southeast of the intersection of Kernersville Medical Parkway and Brookford Road from business center to commercial contingent upon the approval of the rezoning. That was part of their motion. And then the following was the vote of members present at the January meeting. Any questions on this before I move on to the rezoning request? K 823 is the associated rezoning. The applicant is Amanda Segal and the owner is Brookford Properties LLC. From RS 20 is the existing zoning to general business conditional as the proposed zoning for a property that's just over 15 acres. You can see it in the map on the right side of the screen, highlighted in red. The yellow represents the parking lots and then the purple represents the building footprint. Surrounding properties are zoned RS 20, Medical Business Park, RS 20 across Interstate 40 and then RS 20 and Highway Business Special on the west side. So a transition area between legacy RS 20 and the hospital medical business park uses for the VA Novant and the associated facilities for long-term care. The applicant has proposed several uses with this application, residential building, multifamily, professional office, health services miscellaneous, offices miscellaneous, restaurant without drive-through service, retail store specialty or miscellaneous and childcare drop-in. The definitions provided on the screen are in the staff report and are out of the Unified Development Ordinance. This site is located within the highway corridor overlay because of its frontage on Kernersville Medical Parkway and Interstate 40. The highway corridor overlay is intended to regulate development based on the community's vision of major thoroughfares throughout Kernersville. Regulations like building standards, landscaping, parking and use restrictions allow the town to appropriately regulate development within these corridors. As mentioned previously, the current land use plan has this area designated as business center. You see that in the light blue on the picture. And then the proposed land use designation would be commercial with the case previously presented. This site is accessed entirely off of Kernersville Medical Parkway. There are two entrances. There's two commercial buildings and one residential building proposed on the site. The two commercial buildings provide the site with a total of eight commercial units and sit in front of the multifamily building. The residential building is four stories with a proposed height of 60 feet and contain 251 and two-bedroom units. The applicant is proposing 470 parking spaces to be split by all three buildings. As this site, or the proposal has multifamily over a certain number of residential units, common recreation area is required. 36,000 square feet in the center of that building, highlighted in blue, is proposed as a pool area and then a site just shy of 3,000 square feet is shown in the southwest corner that is intended to be used as a dog park. That's kind of a bonus for the site. The UDO requires common recreation area to be of a minimum size. The dog park is just shy of that minimum size, but they're exceeding the minimum required with the pool, so the dog park just is an extra bonus on the site. A street yard meeting highway corridor overlay requirements is shown with the exception of two areas that are highlighted on the right side of the screen. The first area is in the northeast corner of the site where retaining wall has been placed within the street yard. The second area is in the southern portion of the property where the parking lot tightly fits the property line. So there's one site or one portion on Kernersville Medical Parkway and then one portion along Interstate 40. In these areas, a 50% increase in landscaping shall be planted. This is a proposed condition and placement shall be either above the proposed retaining wall or as close to the adjacent parking as possible. This is made possible through the conditional overlay or conditional rezoning in the overlay with a proposal that meets or exceeds the stated conditions. This site is located within the West Fork of the Deep River watershed. The West Fork of the Deep River does border the western property line. The grading for the pond results in 35.5% of the floodplain being graded and filled in order to construct the pond at the proposed location. And the total proposed constructed built-upon area for this project is 45.6%. You may recall that the town built Kernersville Medical Parkway and the sewer extension that directly benefits this parcel. To build the extension, the town used $521,405 of its sewer tax differential fund, which was created to benefit Kernersville by allowing new development in areas previously undevelopable through the extension of public sewer. An agreement was signed by the town and the property owners stating that through ad valorem taxation of properties benefited by this agreement, the town would be able to recoup that nearly half a million dollar investment. The proposed development would not allow the same benefit as a traditional commercial development. It is less likely that the town will see the same benefit from the proposed development as it would with the development that matched the approved land use plan, which does call for industrial and office. Staff summary on the rezoning is that the proposed development is intended to provide limited commercial and residential uses to the existing medical corridor. The development conflicts with the Kernersville Development Plan, which calls for the development of this lot and surrounding areas to serve industrial and corporate park uses. And 250 residential units would lead to the introduction of more apartment complexes and the undermining of long-term planning efforts in this area. We have been receiving calls about other speculative projects on Kernersville Medical Parkway pending this application. While change in the land use plan may be necessary in some instances, staff finds that the general goals of the town, protecting the citizens and their investment, should not be at conflict with anything approved. Staff's recommendation on the rezoning at Planning Board was to move to deny the requested rezoning and amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance in this case. Planning Board made the motion to amend the Unified Development Ordinance of the town by rezoning the properties in this case from RS 20 to general business conditional, finding the rezoning being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but being both reasonable and in the public interest based on the following. The petitioner requested the conditional rezoning to limit the uses on the site to preserve land use plan requirements more closely. The use adds a residential and limited list of commercial uses to an area of town that provides a large employee base and nearby employers and customers are able to easily access the residential and commercial uses through the existing sidewalk and road connections, trying to reduce the traffic impact of the development. Since the motion was presented at Planning Board with the conditions and it's in the Planning Board report that's online, these were the conditions that were presented and discussed with the applicant at Planning Board. So you'll see the site plan. We recommend approval with the conditions as follows, related to land use, the environmental, which has to do with the stormwater on-site, landscaping, which codifies the change to the buffer, or not the buffer, the street yard requirements along Kernersville Medical Parkway and Interstate 40. And then reiterating that the civil construction plan shall be submitted for review and approval matching the site plan that's been submitted. And then this was the Planning Board vote on that rezoning case with the motion for approval subject to the site plan and the conditions presented.
Thank you Catherine. Are there any questions of Ms. Garner at this time? All right, we'll have a public hearing first on the annexation and then a vote on the annexation and then a public hearing on the development plan and the rezoning together. Mr. Powell? Does that sound like a good plan to you? I'll repeat it, that we'll have a public hearing on the annexation only and then a vote on the annexation and then a public hearing on Items B and C, the development plan and the specific rezoning case.
Yes ma'am, that's the proper way to do it.
Okay. And we'll take three separate votes. Does the board have any questions of Ms. Garner? All right, so these are all public hearings. So I'll declare the public hearing on Item 1A, which is the annexation, open. All right, signed up to speak for it, I have Amanda Williams and Barry Segal and Bob Reed. Do any of you want to speak to the annexation? Okay. Did you want to speak on the annexation public hearing? Okay. All right, so there are no proponents that have signed up to speak on the annexation public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on, in favor of the annexation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the annexation? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve 1A.
Okay. Mr. Powell, did you have something to add?
I noticed that the Planning Board did it as a condition of the rezoning being done and that this is a big change to the land use plan.
Would you like to have your motion be approval annexation contingent on the development plan and the rezoning being approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? All opposed. The vote is 3-1, Mr. Hooker. All right. The next is the public hearing on Items B and C, which is a public hearing on the Kernersville Development Plan, zoning docket KPD 72. And Item C, which is the rezoning, zoning docket K 823. I'll declare the public hearing open. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. My name is Amanda Williams. Address is 4425 Monument Trace and I'm with BSC Holdings. I hope you've had a few minutes to review the packet that I passed out earlier that was distributed this evening. I'm here tonight to discuss a proposal for new development in the town of Kernersville. This is not our first or second time we've been developing community. We've built several subdivisions in Kernersville and the multifamily community Knowles at Mill Creek on Old Winston Road across the street from J. Pepper's. Our company is triad-based with our corporate office just 10 minutes away. Unlike many developers, we develop, build, own and manage all of our multifamily communities and we do not sell our communities. We pride ourselves on building first-class communities that provide housing for nurses, doctors, teachers, professionals, empty nesters, retirees and I could go on. Tonight, I am here to request your approval in the rezoning for the 15 acres that Ms. Garner spoke about along Kernersville Medical Parkway, for a type of development that Kernersville has never seen, a type of development that does not exist in this town limits, but has been built in surrounding communities as Greensboro, Winston, High Point and North Colvax area. A development that caters to those that work in the medical profession, families of patients in the rehab and long-term hospital care, retirees that want to be close to medical services, empty nesters looking to be close to services and major thoroughfares and working professionals that are looking for a different type of living. The concept I'm describing all started back in 2012, 2013 for us with the development of the Lost of Little Creek on Hans Mall in Winston-Salem. For many years, at our garden communities in Winston-Salem, we housed Novant and Baptist employees, retirees, baby boomers, et cetera. We were constantly asked, "Do you have any properties close to the hospitals?" as folks wanted to be closer to the services they really needed. All of these folks did not want to live in a standard multifamily community with exteriors, stairwells and hallways. They desired the security of interior corridors and not hearing younger folks running down the hallway at all hours of the evening. They wanted to live close to these medical services, shopping and be able to either walk down the street or in a very short car ride, get to everything they needed right there. Today, we still do house many employees, hospital employees, at not only our development at the Lost of Little Creek, but at other similar developments that we have built in the triad. Our lost communities, which is what we're presenting to you this evening, are different than a standard multifamily garden community. All units are accessed through an interior corridor of the building. All stairwells are interior and unlike most multifamily, this building has several elevators to accommodate those with physical disabilities and those who prefer not to take the stairs. In fact, when we first opened our development in Winston, the Lost of Little Creek, people thought we were a retirement community. We chose not to be age-restricted. We believe folks of all walks of life should have access to a community like this. Most retirement communities or lifestyle communities are very pricey and often have entrance fees of hundreds of thousands of dollars and very high monthly fees, which a lot of folks get priced out of the market for. Preferences in the housing market have shifted dramatically over the past decade. First accelerated by the pandemic and the aging population, they're seeking to minimize their maintenance responsibilities. Renting, while still a necessity for many, has become a desirable option for a large portion of the population, from baby boomers looking to downsize or reduce home maintenance to millennials and Generation Z who plan to work remotely or plan to transition within a few years, either to a new location or to purchase a home in the market. The ULI, which is the Urban Land Institute, reports that the majority of renters are renting by choice, which is a reversal of many long-held assumptions of apartments. In addition, the housing supply dedicated for elderly individuals is very low here in Kernersville. Opportunities to age in place or age in the community is important to provide continued care for citizens and provide high-quality housing. I believe you will see the development before you tonight will meet that need. In addition to the multifamily component, we are proposing approximately 8,000 square feet of commercials you saw in the two buildings in front. They could serve as a coffee shop for working professionals who want to grab a cup of coffee on the way to the hospital, a medical supply store for patients, childcare for those working in the hospitals, an insurance company and I could go on. We had a neighborhood meeting on September 17th. We only heard from Ms. Vicki Mabe, who owns the property next door, and Jeff Andrews, who works very closely with Novant's regional real estate managers. Ms. Mabe told me she was excited about our development and said that it would help spur much-needed development in the Parkway that has not occurred in many years. We submitted to the planning staff a copy of the email sent to Jeff Andrews, which he shared with the regional real estate managers for Novant Health. In my discussions with Jeff, he stated that the regional real estate managers of Novant Health conceptually liked our plans. We have housed many Novant employees over the years and have had a great relationship with Novant. We recognize that the land use plan area, or land use for this area is designated medical and business center. While it was a great idea to have a medical Parkway, the market unfortunately has shown that the land use plan does not fit the needs of the community. The original land use plan was completed many years ago. It's been several years since the last development was built on the Parkway that met this land use plan. We have found in neighboring communities that the areas that are most successful is when there is a mix of land uses that work in harmony with one another. As I mentioned earlier, having areas where folks can live, work and play is what makes things successful. If you want the Parkway to succeed, which I know everybody in this room does, then allowing a mix of land uses that complement the existing developments will accomplish that goal. The Parkway needs a mix of harmonizing uses to help it succeed. When we developed the Lost of Little Creek in 2012, the Shops of Little Creek, which is where it's located, was struggling, just like the Parkway is today. Once folks started living in the Lost of Little Creek, the Shops of Little Creek flourished. The medical office building next door became fully occupied. Duke actually built a medical facility right next door to us and many other supporting businesses were built on previously vacant parcels nearby. The Board of Aldermen has previously acknowledged a need for changes to the land use plan by approving two nearby rezoning requests that I know you are familiar with. One on Little John Road in October of 2022 and the second in November of 2024 along Brookford Road. In both cases, you all recognize that despite what the land use plan said and staff's recommendation, that these uses were beneficial to the success of this area. We believe and we hope that you will concur with us tonight that this project will benefit the Parkway and the town. As Catherine mentioned, we reckon, you saw the staff, or the Planning Board, excuse me, we got unanimous approval. And I do want to say thank you to the staff. They have been an absolute joy to work with and I would like to turn it over to Barry.
Good, Mr. Segal?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Barry Segal. My address is 4425 Monument Trace. Amanda touched on the cost of living briefly on retirement facilities and the concern of folks running out money due to the high cost of these facilities. Perhaps as important are the other intangibles, such as the lack of daily interaction with young people and the unfortunate situation of constantly learning about and hearing about ailments and health issues of others. When we opened up our first lost project in Winston-Salem, we had the occasion to take one of our bankers, okay, on the tour of the building. As we were riding the elevator, an elderly gentleman with his walker joined us. About the same time, a young, good-looking nurse joined us for a short time period as well. She got off on the next floor. As the doors for the elevator closed, the elderly gentleman turned to us and said with a glowing wide smile on his face, "See, this is why I live here." The project presented to you here tonight is not your typical multifamily project and it provides an alternative style of living found in other cities. It provides older folks with the opportunity to live independently, have part-time or full-time caregiving services and maintain their independence. full-time caregiving services, and maintain their independence. This facility will also provide nearby housing for those that work in both the Kernersville Hospital and VA Hospital. Accordingly, our older clientele will have the ability to interact with younger neighbors and working professionals. When appropriate, these folks, okay, can transition to other accommodations, knowing that they are better positioned to handle the financial burdens associated with other types of retirement facilities and care facilities. It also provides convenient, much-needed housing for the hospital staff and other medical personnel living nearby. We recognize that the staff's recommendation for denial is based substantially on the fact that this type of use does not comply with the existing land use plan. The existing land use plan was developed many years ago and envisioned that the Parkway would be developed with a combination of medical and office uses. Unfortunately, there has been limited development on the Parkway in the past years, and we do not believe that there's any need for office space in the foreseeable future. In our opinion, the proposed project would help stimulate complementary development as our Lofts of Little Creek project did in Winston-Salem. We appreciate that the exclusion of multifamily housing in the existing land use plan for Kernersville Medical Parkway was conceivably based in part on the physical characteristics of apartments. Multifamily complexes typically have exterior hallways, stairwells, pitched single roofs, okay, vinyl clad siding over most of the building with limited architectural features, and have banks of heat pumps surrounding the building. Many such projects are undertaken by out-of-state developers who frequently do not plan or desire to own the project for the long time, and as merchant builders often compromise the quality and design in order to cut costs and seek higher profits on the resale. We ask that you compare the architectural renderings of the proposed project to nearby hospital and retirement facility, and you'll clearly see the similarities and the total absence of unsightly features in the high quality of the finishes. In contrast to single-family lot developments and townhome developments constructed on public streets, this development will be a moneymaker for Kernersville. For street lighting is private, drives and parking areas are private, trash collection is private, no snow removal is provided, nor are there any services provided other than police and fire. As you know, the need for these services varies greatly based on the type of multifamily development and the management of them. At the planning board meeting, staff expressed their concern that the town will lose revenue from water usage as compared to office or industrial development. We need only to point out that the water usage from two hundred and fifty units greatly exceed the usage obtained from offices with limited bathrooms and from typical industrial warehouse developments. This project will add approximately forty million dollars to Kernersville's tax base. While the Forsyth County Tax Department will ultimately establish the tax value for this project, using the current milling rate, this project will generate close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for Kernersville. Tonight, you have the opportunity to approve what we believe is the first-class, much-needed facility. Do not dismiss this opportunity based solely on the fact that it does not fit the existing, outdated land use plan. Consider this opportunity based on its merits, and in doing so, we believe that you will agree that this opportunity is one that is appropriate for this location and provides a much-needed lifestyle for the citizens and future citizens of Kernersville, and in doing so, will help stimulate additional development on the Parkway. And as men as early, we do appreciate all the help from staff, and we do hope that you'll give proper consideration to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Mr. Reed?
Got some water, just in case. Madam Mayor Morgan, Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, Alderman Barra, Alderman Angel, Bill Apple, Alderman J.R. Gorman. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I want to first of all thank Catherine and the planning staff for the cooperation and the job that they did, working with Barry and Amanda and their team. Alan Bennett and myself were involved in several meetings, and they did an excellent job. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the history of this property, and I, along with Alan Bennett, a longtime resident of Kernersville, Bob Hunt, a longtime resident of Kernersville, and Jerry Medford, who is now deceased, and now his wife Carolyn has been a resident of Kernersville since nineteen eighty-two. I've been in Kernersville, it's hard to believe, since August of nineteen seventy-two, and forty-nine years ago, on February second, nineteen seventy-six, I started a career in banking here in Kernersville. Kernersville is home. It means a lot to each of us. When we were given an opportunity to look at purchasing this property in June of oh seven, you know, we were excited about it, thinking about the potential.
Mr. Reed, I don't want you to run out of time.
Pardon me?
I don't want you to run out of time, so be mindful of the time.
All right. I'm moving very quickly. How much time do I have? Okay, I'm good. But anyway, we envisioned things that this property could do over the next several years. We went, I was part of the group that went to Huntersville to look at the plan for the hospital there, and we were thinking we would get a lot of commercial use and medical use in this property. That has not occurred. We have not received any type of offers or communications about anything for any office, medical, retail space at all during the almost eighteen years now that we've had this property. So we feel like that this project that they're looking at doing is something that we could be proud of to see being done in Kernersville. Amanda and Barry and their team do an excellent job, and we think that this would be a great addition to Kernersville. When I started thinking about this, I thought about, you know, in my career in banking, we have policies and we have procedures and things that we have to go by. Catherine and her team and the town, they have policies and procedures that you need to go by. But in many, many cases over my career, and I'm sure J.R., being a banker, and Bill, a banker, you realize that sometimes you have to look at, you know, the end result, and does it make sense? And when I sit back and look at this and look at the quality of the project that's going to be built, I feel like this makes sense. You know, we would all love to have seen, you know, a lot of medical things that come up along the Parkway, but it's just not happening. We don't see new offices being built. The vacancy rate in offices in Forsyth County and across North Carolina is very high right now. People are working at home. There are new offices being built, nor are there any new medical offices being built. Therefore, we feel pretty confident that this would be a great, great project for Kernersville, and we ask for your support, and we appreciate it, and I thank each of you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? You can state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dave Fulp. I live at fifteen-ten Brookford Road, have property at fifteen-fifteen Brookford Road, and sixteen-thirty-six Brookford Road. Like Bob, I'm pretty old. I've been here since nineteen fifty-four, and I'll be the closest neighbor in Ms. Mabe, who was spoke of. She's ten, my first cousin, and all the immediate family and extended family were for this. That land down there has set idle so long, and I watched Union Cross just going crazy, Winston's just kicking our, you know, and it's time stuff started to happen on the Parkway. And, you know, my property's directly across from this, and I'd love to see stuff happen. And probably my dog is going to make me get a guest pass to the dog park. So I approve this project.
Thank you. All right, there's one minute and a few seconds left. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Thank you, Mr. Fulp, for sharing your comments. Keith, did you get his name and address, okay? Or do you need?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Is there anyone else in favor who'd like to speak? All right, seeing none, let's see if there's anyone in opposition. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? This would be an opportunity to be an opponent to the project and speak your mind either on the development plan or the rezoning and conditions. All right, seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, board, we need to do two separate votes. One would be on the development plan, and one would be on the rezoning. And I think, Mr. Powell, on the vote on the Kernersville Development Plan, we could make that contingent on the rezoning passing, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay. All right, is there a motion on the proposed Kernersville Development Plan, KDP seventy-two?
Madam Mayor, a couple of terms come to mind as I begin to make this motion. One is longevity, and the other is harmony, both of which were words that were used in the presentations here. If this were a project that, you know, was simply a symptom or a last resort of someone wanting to flip property frequently, I don't believe nearly an eighteen-year holding of it is consistent with that. But more importantly, I think, is harmony, and that is harmony in connection with the facilities, the infrastructure that exists there, including Kernersville Medical Parkway, water and sewer, and also harmony, which is consistent with the long-term use of the property there on Kernersville Medical Parkway. I think the worst plan that we could develop would be to a plan that's seventeen years old that we are unwilling to adjust as the economy and as circumstances and history dictate. So with all of those taken into consideration, it's my pleasure to make a motion that we approve the proposed resolution related to the development plan contingent upon the approval of the rezoning.
Yeah, I've got a motion by Alderman Apple. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It was a three, one vote, Mr. Hooker. Okay, next is the rezoning. This is zoning docket K eight, two, three. Is there further discussion, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Alderman, or by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson with the rezoning and the conditions recommended by staff, and did the planning board add a few conditions?
Planning board had the conditions, and staff recommended denial, so it would be planning board's recommendation and the conditions proposed.
Okay. Is that, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Apple, all in favor? Three in favor? All opposed? One opposed? All right. When do you think you'll get this project underway? Okay. If you weren't able to hear that, Mr. Siegel responded that it would take a year because of many approvals that are needed in order to start the project. Right? Thank you, everyone, for your comments and your participation in those public hearings. Is there anything further we need to do on this, Ms. Garner? Or Mr. Powell? Anything further we need to do as to items A, B, and C?
There we are.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to item D, which is a public hearing on a development agreement between Channel Marker Woodbine LLC relating to property located at four-eleven Salisbury Street for the construction and maintenance of a stormwater control measure. So it affects four-one-one Salisbury Street and four-oh-five Salisbury Street. Mr. Swisher?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the parcel that the community house is on. It's the back part of that parcel. As you all recall, Channel Marker Investments came in. They were approved for rezoning of their lot, which is right next door, for townhomes. They needed to make that work the most efficiently. They needed some of the town's property for their stormwater device. So it's what we did was, for us to ever expand the community house, whether it be the building or the parking lot, we would also need a stormwater device. So it's what we did was, we worked out an agreement with them that you have in your packet, that basically they would build a stormwater device big enough to accommodate the town's expansion in exchange for the land. So it's about a quarter of acre land. We can't do the exchange, so we're selling them that quarter of an acre, and then they'll come back, we'll come back in and pay them the thirty-five thousand dollars for the cost of stormwater pond. So it's a washout. Basically, it's still, we're giving them the land, they're building the stormwater pond that we need. Be glad to answer any questions you have. We don't have any, you know, any immediate plans to expand the community house. We have discussed expanding the parking lot at some time, but again, to do that, we would need a stormwater device. This would accommodate that.
Okay, is there anything that you need to present, Ms. Garner? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. And as everyone can imagine, to do something like this with a development agreement has covered discussion at many, many public meetings. All right, and thank you for your work on this, Mr. Swisher, and looking forward to the needs of the community as to the community house. All right, so we are to the public session. This is our opportunity for speakers from the floor to address the board on an item that is not included on the agenda. I have Lori Eggerter and Dennis Wright signed up to speak on Military Tribute and the Tree of Valor. So I'll first recognize Lori, if you'd like to start.
She's fifteen. My name is Lori Eggerter. My address is twenty-five fifty-six Redwood Hill Court.
And I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to speak into the microphone. This meeting is also covered on YouTube, and there's no way for the people watching to hear what you're saying without the microphone, regrettably, although we can all hear you very well. But you can carry the microphone around and move with it if you need to.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
My name is Lori Eggerter, and my address is twenty-five fifty-six Redwood Hill Court, Kernersville. I'm founder and president of the Tree of Valor, and I brought with me today twenty-two guests. The twenty-two guests are the faces of twenty-two veterans who have taken The 22 guests are the faces of 22 veterans who have taken their life. These 22 veterans were just taken to Augusta, Georgia last weekend for a DAV, which is Disabled American Veterans Convention. Although we started this tribute in 2019, we became a nonprofit in 2022, December 2022. And sometimes when you start something, what you plan and what God plans clearly aren't the same. So we have been here in Kernersville with our military tribute, and it's really hard to put this into this short timeframe, what we're looking at and we're asking for today. I don't even know if this is the right forum for it. I was just told to come here. So I apologize if I'm completely not in the right place.
Go ahead and tell us what's on your mind.
Okay, so I'm going to have Catherine play a video that Gerald Gorham does not realize what he did for our tribute. This video was meant to be played later in February, but in order for everyone to see the impact of what our organization does and why I want its home to be in the town that I live in, you need to see what one person has done with our project, his choice. And, and what you'll see, you'll see a small glimmer of something that he did that was of his own doing. And what you're about to see is 22 chairs covered with flags. And on those chairs are pictures, just like the ones in this box. He came to do a book signing in our gallery. I'm sorry to pick on you today, Gerald Gorham, but he came and I said to him, would you mind placing the photos on the chairs? I thought he was just going to lay the photos there. I turned around, I came back, and there he was saluting the chairs. And I said, you need to stop. I said, because I have to video this, because these families are going to want to see this. There's honor in serving your country. There's honor in dying for your country. But if you take your life, people don't necessarily consider that an honor. Those aren't my words. It's how people feel, according to the families. It's a different kind of loss. So what he chose to do, the initiative he took, made a trickle-down effect in our nonprofit that now what was once a project that was primarily in North Carolina, he's about to see what he did. So his choice to, to do that saluting led to nonprofits and veteran organizations across the country asking us to bring those chairs, as well as our trees, that we call healing trees, to their events, because we discovered that our, that the Tree of Valor is where America heals by telling their story. So I'd like to thank General Gorham for what he did, because thousands of families now literally are seeing what you did, and they want me to thank you. What I'm looking for today is we have space at Cooper's Vintage Village here in Kernersville, and we need to remove our, our things from there. We have a headquarters in Burlington, North Carolina. It's a couple thousand square feet. There's literally 100 healing trees in this facility. Each one's a different story from an Agent Orange tree that someone like Dennis has donated to Pearl Harbor, to Kabul. When I went to Cooper's to go get my things, the tribute that we had there, I was just going to take it to Burlington. And I felt like, and I've had people in this town say to me, why did you leave? Like, I couldn't stay at the Pinnix because it was closed, but what I'm saying is, I have so many people in this town that have said to me, why can't you find something here? So I have exhausted in the past every idea that I had. And people have said to me, you need to go see the mayor, you, you need to come see the Alderman, you need to just see if brainstorm ideas. Like I said, I don't really think this was the forum for this, but I was just doing what I was told, because I'm about to take the things that are here and take them to another town. But I live here. I love this town, and it's a national organization now that I feel like whatever town we're in, it's a compliment to that town. And I would love it to be the town that I live in. Moreover, what we call the heart of the project is a little girl, my daughter, who literally has done so much with this project, even though she doesn't walk, she doesn't talk, she just drives around the gallery in her wheelchair. The impact that she is having on veterans is absolutely unbelievable, so much so that the Red Cross made her a civilian hero in 2022, and Senator Ted Budd just had a flag flown over the Capitol for her. Clearly, she's doing something. But for me, what's even more telling is what people like Dennis and JR and you, Sir Mr. Apple, all of you have done for her. She does not have cerebral palsy like everyone thinks. She has a rare genetic disease that just as of last summer, they have said to us, her brain is now shrinking. So her life is very different. But what seems like it is having an impact on her are the people that come into the gallery. So this isn't like a plea to, oh, I want a town to save my child, although that's, would be a beautiful thing if they could heal her, right? It would be amazing. It's just if anyone has any ideas of a way for our nonprofit to find a home in this town, I am open. I just wanted to plant the idea, because I was told this would be a great place to do it. So I do have, we do a weekly, monthly newspaper in The Southerner, so I brought a paper for all of you to have, so you, you know, I don't expect any decisions of any sort to be made today. This is purely for information purposes, but I wanted to give Dennis, who's probably our biggest fan, and has been a volunteer for us since almost the beginning, and I appreciate his support. We also had another volunteer, Larry McDonald, but I don't think he got to sign the card, who's been to the headquarters in Burlington to share maybe why they feel like it's valuable to you. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Hooker, did you have anything to add? You've got about five minutes, a little bit over.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Wright. I'm here in support of Lori's Veterans Project. As a disabled Vietnam veteran, I appreciate everything she does to keep veterans' faces in the public, not hidden. It's hard to put into words what I've seen take place from parents, children, spouse, when they're touring one of the events or at the gallery in Burlington, and they recognize their loved one's picture on the tree. It's heartbreaking, but it's also comforting to them to know that their loved one will not be forgotten, and that is the purpose of her project. She's gone to, I don't know how many states, but over the entire eastern United States, at her expense mostly, as she could get in the town of Kernersville. Kernersville already being a very patriotic town, should definitely be an asset to this town. Just wanted to show my support for her. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir. If you could, Cars, could you get this from her? Thank you, thank you for coming and presenting tonight, Lori. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak as a speaker from the floor? All right, seeing none, is there any, did you have any comments, General Gorham?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment as to what propelled me to do what I did that day. I was asked to come to the gallery there in Burlington and became affiliated with Lori when she had the trees at the Pinnix Building here in town. And we had to go in there one day and, you know, to move them all out. So I didn't have anything to do that day, so I went and helped her move them out, and that's how I started my affiliation with her, when she suggested placing the pictures down, even though those soldiers, those soldiers that I saluted that day had committed suicide. And for those who are not aware, we lose about 22 military folks every day to suicide. Is that 40? Well, when I was in, it was 22 military people who served this country, and for whatever reason, decided to take their life, but they did serve this country, and I thought that they should be honored. So that is why I posted out and rendered a salute to them as I placed their pictures on those chairs that day. And because all have given some, but some have given all. And although they ended their lives not in combat, they did faithfully serve this country prior to the traffic day where they took their own lives. And I think they should be remembered, and I think they should be saluted. And that's why I did what I did that day. Did not know that it was going to start a movement, but it's what I felt in my heart to do, and I thought they were deserving, and I still feel that way. And if there's any way that we can find a place here in Kernersville to continue to honor those fallen, I would definitely support it.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham. Anything else? And again, if you, if you didn't hear me, Mr. Wright, thank you for your service to the country. And Lori, thank you for, thank you. And Lori, thank you for bringing your presentation, and your daughter is quite wonderful. So, all right. And there are no more speakers from the floor, so we'll move on to item B, the Kernersville Mural Festival. And Christina Parrish was going to present that.
Hi, my name is Christina Parrish. Address is 1207 Marietta Drive. I am a former educator and a full-time mural artist, and I'm sure you guys all know that Kernersville has a rich mural history, which began with Jules Kerner himself painting boulderum in our public art sector. However, we are between Greensboro and Winston-Salem and High Point, and in all those cities, you see an excess of public art, and it is beautiful, but I'm here to bridge that gap and bring it to Kernersville. So what Kernersville Mural Festival is, is it's going to be a primarily women-run mural festival, if you want to move forward. Murals can bring a lot of value to our area that is not only primarily aesthetic value. If you are interested in this whole presentation, you can feel free, my email is at the end, and you can reach out to me, and I can send this, but for now, I'm going to move forward just so I can get to all of it. So when I asked for, or when I started this, I asked for artist involvement first. Without artists, you can't have the art. So what artists did is they applied through my website, and they applied with one sheet of their favorite artworks that they've created. So basically, they applied with their portfolio. This one right here is my own artist sheet. Now, participating owners of businesses or wall owners or wall donors will get to choose their artists based off of these sheets themselves. Each selected artist will work under a signed contract. They are required to give the wall owner or donor three designs to choose from with two rounds of revisions and provide liability insurance for the event. Each artist, our goal is to pay them $35 a square feet, up to $40 a square feet. We, in the past, were looking for business owners to donate their walls to this event. When I started this event, I was looking for wall owners or business owners to pay for murals outright. Unfortunately, with businesses, the way they're run, you can't just pay for a mural sometimes. So what I moved forward with is asking for donations of walls and spaces to make this art happen. That doesn't mean the funding's not going to come later, because we will not have this event without paying the artists to do the murals. But the final date for wall donations is tomorrow, and I had to cap it, because we have to move forward with the funding, which you'll hear about in later slides. So to participate as a wall owner or business owner, you could donate the wall with no funding, you could donate the wall with a little bit of funding, or you could fully fund your entire mural. Each level of funding gets you a different level of, I guess, participation with the artists. If you give a wall with no funding, you get to select your top 10 artists. If you partially fund your mural, you get to select your top five, and if you fully fund your mural, you get to select your top three artists. And then you're going to be matched with an artist from there. Basically, you are selecting an artist based off of their portfolio, not based off of what they can do for your wall specifically. The goal is to enrich Kernersville with artworks that are artist-led. We are now on the hunt for financial sponsors. So in the past, when I was looking for business owners to fully fund their own murals, and that wasn't working, I moved forward with finding a fiscal agent. So we partnered with the Arts Council of Winston-Salem, and now all funding will go through them. So say you were able to give a wall, but only give $500 towards the mural, that $500 will go to, through the Arts Council, and they are a 501(c)(3) organization, so you'll get the letter to write that off on your taxes. So right now, the website is up, as of today, to begin accepting financial sponsors. So we are looking for either square foot sponsors, and then from there, we have bronze through gold level. So we are looking for either square foot sponsors, and then from there, we have bronze through gold level sponsors. And with each level, you get a different level of involvement in the mural festival. If you are a gold level sponsor, that means you are funding the majority of an entire mural, which would give you, say, in the selection process of what goes on that wall. We currently have 15 walls that have been donated. And I foresee a couple more being added to that list, and we have the map up there, starting at Mustang Crutchfield and ending all the way down at C&amp;J Pond. What I need, I guess, from the Board of Aldermen, one wall that is potentially going to be donated is the bathroom section of the Founder's Park wall. So not the entire brick wall, but just that end maroon-y orange section. And I need the Board of Aldermen to vote on whether or not the town is going to donate that. And then after that vote takes place, your level of funding, how you want to participate there. I will need to know that fairly shortly, because we do need to move forward with knowing exactly how much money we need to raise for this event moving forward.
And could you explain to the board when the event's taking place?
Oh, the event is going to take place during the spring folly. So the streets are always already going to be shut off. We'll have more than enough room. We've collaborated with the chamber already, and that is May 2nd through 4th. And then May 18th is when the artists are expected to be done with their murals. Do y'all have any further questions?
Yeah, is there any questions? I guess the first question is, is there an interest in exploring having that, that section of the bathroom wall? It would be behind the fountain at Fourth of July Park.
If you move back one slide, it is on there, it is number 14.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe a question and a statement. In the long run, who's responsible for these murals when they start fading out?
Oh, yeah, talk to us about, Ernie had met with Christina before, but that's not included in your presentation. What's the lifespan of a mural?
So I give murals a lifespan of 10 years. And a lot of the walls that we are looking at are already painted, if not, they could use paint. So I give lifespan of a mural about 10 years before maybe they begin to have some level of visual fading. The artwork itself is not meant to be upkept by me or any of the artists. It's meant to be upkept by the building owner. So for example, number seven is the exterior of Blue Ness Mercantile, and that wall is already peeling. So they understand that their mural on that wall is probably not going to last as long as number 12 would last. Because it's, you're up to, I guess, how the wall already is. Each wall owner is going to be responsible for cleaning the wall and pressure washing it before the event, which is going to lead to the longevity of the mural. But in the end, if you don't like it, or you don't want to see it continue, you can paint right over it.
How about the walls that aren't painted, that are brick? I see two of them at least that are brick.
No, there's three of them that are brick, and one of them is split into six sections. So if you look right now at Cake and All Things Yummy, that mural was done in 2020. It's 2025 now, so we're five years into what I would call the lifespan of that mural. And I don't see it fading or falling off the wall or being defaced anytime soon, not to say that it won't. But it really is up to the business owner and how long they want to keep it up. Now, if you decide, and I guess that's your risk of participation, if you don't like it, so say she and Jay Pond, that's a section of a brick wall. If they decide after 10 years that they don't want it, they would probably have to paint the entire wall and/or get it sandblasted off. But that is up to that building owner and up to that business owner.
And I think that needs to be clear, because we've been through this before with the murals on the side of Arnold King's building. The town supported and endorsed painting those murals. Now they're not what they used to be, and the building owners have said, well, this was a town endorsed and sponsored project. We think the town should pay to fix those murals back. So I think it needs to be clear to the property owners.
It is clear, all the wall donors have to sign a contract to participate. It is clear that it is not the responsibility, and I can add a clause if you would like, not the responsibility of the town, but it is very clear that it is not the responsibility of the artists nor myself for the upkeep of the mural.
It needs to be in big, bold letters.
Big, bold letters.
Because otherwise, in 10 years, three or four of those are going to be up here to the Board of Aldermen and saying, this was an endorsed project, it's a spring folly, and the town needs to pay for my mural.
Well, also, this is not a town-run event, it is a me-run event.
I'm not arguing with you there.
So you can direct them right back to me.
What happens if you're not here in 10 years? Now, I'm just playing the devil's advocate.
Again, it's not your, it's not the town's event, so you can, you can displace blame really quickly there.
I understand that, but I'm telling you, that's not the way it works in reality.
Okay.
So it needs to be clear, it needs to be in bold letters. The other thing that we have to be careful of, and Catherine and I talked about it today, do you get to choose what mural goes on the building?
So the artist's respons, you're picking the artist based off of their portfolio, but the artist is responsible for giving the building owner or wall owner three designs to choose from, along with two rounds of revisions. In that contract, there is going to say, no profanity, no political statements, no religious statements. It's specifically for aesthetic purposes, for enjoyment of the public.
Then we just need to be sure that they're not violating a sign ordinance, because if they paint the name of the building on the side of that wall...
No logos are allowed.
It could be violation, if no logos are allowed, then, you know, they couldn't paint on the side of Mustangs and Crutchfield. They couldn't paint Mustang and Crutchfield, established 1938, whatever, because it violates the sign ordinance, even as part of the mural. Is that right?
That is correct, our, our sign code does define a sign as anything that's, whether it's like a sign that is hanging or it is painted on the building, some, that would also sort of extend to things like, if it was the mural that was on Cake and All Things Yummy, if it was cupcakes rather than Gone to Carolina, then it's still signage for the business. The other thing that I wanted to bring up that I have some concerns about as a preservation person is sandblasting on some of these old bricks and even pressure washing can damage historic brick, depending on the age of the brick. And so without knowing the age of some of these bricks, I would be really concerned about long-term damage to them, both in the cleaning process and then in any removal process. And I don't want to see, both in terms of the maintenance of the, and the artist's work, but also then the long-term maintenance of a building. Want to make sure that we're not doing unintended damage to those, those old bricks.
The only wall that I would be concerned about with that would be the number seven wall.
Uh, perhaps. I, I don't know, but I just, there are some old buildings, 13's pretty old too, so I don't want to see anything get damaged in the process.
Of course.
I would think that we'd want Ed to take a really close look at this agreement, and that we, if we can, time-wise, if we can do that such that any comments that he may have along the lines of what we've talked about could be easily incorporated into your subsequent ones, I think that that would be a benefit to you.
No, I completely understand. I will let you know that all of these wall owners have already gotten the contract in hand to sign. So if you want word and you want, you want your voice heard, it needs to be done by tomorrow. This is, because this event, this event is taking place and the funding is in process.
I'm not sure how we can make that happen.
Well, you would...
I'm not real sure, honestly, that the board has to approve anything, unless you want to participate with a wall. It is private buildings, private owners. The street's already blocked. I mean, if I'm John Crutchfield at Mustang and Crutchfield, I can say, yes, I want a mural on the side of my building. And they can go out there and paint it. From a liability standpoint, that might be the best way to handle it. Now, if the town obviously wants the bathroom at Founder's Park painted, and I think there was one maybe showing a depiction of the bathroom at Fourth of July Park, maybe? If the town wants town property painted, then yes, you would have to do that tonight, as she's saying. But otherwise, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you have to give approval to anything. It's private buildings, private walls. They've already got the contract, they just need to make sure that it doesn't violate the sign ordinance. I think it's, yeah, any city ordinance, that's all that the town would have, have to do with it. Unless you want, like I say, unless you want one on town property, then you would, I'm understanding, we need to let you know that tonight, correct?
As soon as possible. So right now, I already have you on the list and prioritized, but say you want to pay for the mural outright and select the exact artists that you want to paint that mural. Right now, I have artist applications set for 2009, and I'm going to move forward with matching artists to walls on 2010, so that we understand who is set for which wall. And as we receive funding, we can start checking off those artists and putting them to work and making those designs for those walls. So yes, you are on the list, but if you want to prioritize which artists that you want, then decisions will have to be made fairly quickly. I'm not going to take you off the list if you can't make a decision, but other artists may be assigned to other walls. Is the risk in waiting?
I think we need to take the risk in waiting, because I don't want to be slam dunked. I mean, I think there's any ulterior motive to that at all, please understand.
So subject to Ed Powell agreeing with the contract, are you interested in painting that wall number 14, bathroom section of Founder's Park? How much did she say that that?
I believe that one, so right now, the lowest one is around $3,800, and the highest one is around $9,800.
And Madam Mayor, I think that would, what's painted on that, I mean, we've been through this before with the entire wall, but I think what's painted on that wall needs to come back to this Board of Aldermen for approval.
She said you'd get three designs to choose from.
Yeah, and so I think it comes, if the board chooses to do it, I mean, I think we need to look and make sure it's something that fits in with, with the park there, and also come back to this board for approval. I know last time we went through this, we couldn't agree on what mural was to be on the wall, and ultimately ended up with nothing on the wall, but it is a smaller portion of the wall. But, I mean, we can certainly, if the board chooses to do that, we can take a look and bring it back. When would we have to, when would the board have to let you know what design they would want on the bathroom?
Do you mean ahead of being assigned an artist and seeing their portfolio and that?
The way this is going to work, I anticipate with the board is, you're going to have to tell us what that wall's going to look like, and then it's going to come back to this board, and they're going to choose one of those many renditions, renditions to go on the walls. So what I'm trying to figure out is, if we have to do that tonight, that's probably not going to be possible, because we don't have the...
Right, that's why I'm bringing it, I guess, to you guys, because if it's going to be overly complicated like that, this wall might not be a good fit for the mural festival. It may be a good fit for a mural in the future, just maybe not for this festival. So I currently have 36 artists that have applied. And starting the week of February 10th, I will be matching artists to walls. I'm not, the, the artists would be matched based off of your list of your top 10 favorite. If you're not funding it at all, then you're going to be limited to that artist's portfolio. So I make artwork that is color-blocked, kind of posterized, if you think like the Marilyn Monroe, yeah, that, that type of pop art style. You're not going to come to me and say, I want a hyper-realistic picture of a plant on this, because that's not going to be within my skillset. So once you're matched with an artist, you are able to tell that artist what theme you want the artwork to be, but you can't dictate, I want 50 million things within this design, before we actually know that the funding exists for that wall. Because we're not putting our artists to work without paying them first.
But if the board said tonight, we'll fund it at $3,500, when will we know what that wall's going to look like, so that this board has some options to choose from?
Well before the event date.
Okay.
So the event date is May 2nd, and so you would be able to decide well before that, that painting happens.
I think there was a slide you sent me earlier that showed $4,500 for that wall.
It's possible, I'm, I have the numbers of 15 walls in my head right now, so I...
Can you go back to your artist sheet to show an example of what you're saying about your color-blocked style? So Christina painted the logo, or it's not a logo, it's the dogwood and the mat at Cakes and All Things Yummy, which is across from there, and there's some of her other...
Have you been at Birdhouse Books before I painted the entirety of the interior of Birdhouse Books minus their logo?
So there wouldn't be a guarantee as to any particular artist, it would be one of three, but there's 40 different sheets she has that are like that. I would suggest if we wanted to do this, maybe having a subcommittee with Ernie and Curtis and Catherine, maybe, and then myself and two Aldermen, we could meet and, you know, pick a top three list of artists, or top five list, or whatever. You know, that would be a first step we could do. But I guess the big issue is, if we'd like to do something with that wall soon, this is an opportunity to do something soon. Because we'd have it ready and done in May. Right now, it's the, that, that wall is, you know, a brick, but the bathroom section is like, I think maybe even it's cinder block.
It is cinder block, it's just painted.
And it's painted like a brick red, if you remember, and you see it right behind the, the water feature. If you had people posed for a picture right in front of the water feature, then they have a direct shot of that, kind of that bathroom addition. So it's an opportunity the board could explore. Or we could study it, have our staff, Ernie's looked into it, Ed hasn't seen the contract, the town manager hasn't seen the contract, so we could also ask our staff to look into it further.
That would be my preference, Madam Mayor. Do you need a motion to that effect?
Sure, make a motion.
I'd make a motion to the effect that we ask staff...
If you could talk into your microphones, we can hear you. Christina, you can sit down if you want.
I'd like to make a motion that we have staff look into the possibility of town's participation in this project and make their recommendations to us.
Okay, would you like to make a recommendation that we look into that wall and also the side of the bathroom at the skate park at Fourth of July Park? Right, but if we're going to look at town-sponsored murals?
I'm, I'm fine with that, I, I'm not, I'm not as enthusiastic about that personally.
Ernie, can you, can you speak to that wall? You spoke a lot about that wall when I talked with you about this. Sorry to interrupt you mid-motion, just so, I mean, if we're going to look at a mural painted, we might as well look at everything. Yes, do it once.
We're talking about the Fourth of July Skate Park wall?
Yeah, if you want to mention the Fourth of July Skate Park wall and the, the portable mural that you wanted to, you were interested in, like the honey, we have one that Christina painted for the Honeybee Festival. It's that giant color block bee. I know you've seen it, it's been...
So we contracted Christina four years ago, three years ago, four years ago. She did a portable mural for us, it's become a selfie spot for the Honeybee Festival, it's a real colorful bee. We put out for every Honeybee Festival. And then at that time, we started discussing possibly doing something on the, the Bowden Hammer Street, no, no, the Mountain Street White Wall, that sits and faces Bowden Hammer Street, sorry, Mountain Street.
It's between the entrance to the, it's, it's between the mountains, Mountain Street entrance to the park and the house.
Right, it's just a white wall, so we looked at doing something, it gets, it gets tagged a lot, it's, it's white, it gets dingy, it gets off-white, you know? So I was, we looked it up at that point, and doing some kind of mural to give some color and kind of give it a livelier look. At, at that point, I think we kind of stopped, we started, started looking at designs, and we just, things got busy and everyone passed that. So, so we looked at that one as well, and it just gives a different look, gives a little live, a little live color to that building. It's just otherwise, it's just, it gets tagged, like I said, it's a lot of graffiti, a lot of tagging, a lot of dinginess to it, because it's just white, white and black.
And then you were, you'd mentioned also one for the cross-country tournaments.
Correct, another, and another portable mural, sort of like what we did for Honeybee for the cross-country, so the kids that get their awards can stand in front of it for the photo ops and stuff.
Do you remember how much the Honeybee mural was?
I think it was like $800, eight something, no? $2,500, yeah.
So that's the, if you've seen it, it's the large plywood, and then it's painted.
It's probably what, would you say 12 foot by eight, eight foot by eight foot? Looks like 12 foot to me, I'm short, so.
And then we, we store it when it's not in use, so it's gotten, how many, we've probably used it at three festivals, maybe, by now?
Four.
Four.
This will be the fifth one coming up.
I know y'all have seen it on the front page of the paper, if you haven't seen it, the festival, because there's always somebody posed in front of it.
Any other questions?
Do you have any further questions? Do you have any further questions, Ernie? So, could you include in your motion to look at those three different types of murals?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, go ahead and make your motion.
I'm not sure I can.
Get it written down.
We would ask that, that staff, uh, uh, explore the possibility of the town participating with regard to those three murals that we, or three projects that we talked about. And come back to the Board for approval of selection of what goes on each one before it's done.
Does that give you something that you can work with? All right, that's guidance for our staff, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? All opposed? I get to vote, I'm in favor. So, three, two.
I've got a quick question now that we have that vote.
Yeah, I can't see you tonight because John's sitting so forward.
It's like a tennis match.
I think it's because the court has put, all night I've not been able to see you, so, I think it's because the court has, if, if you all can't see it from where you are, the court system meets here and there is a color photocopier and printer back here, there's reams of paper, there's a box of, uh, technology equipment and there's all their standing files that they use. So, there's this whole like storage area back here that has never been this way, quite to this level before tonight, so, apologies. Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
So, we talked about the Hedgecock Wall for, it seemed like six months and we never really could come to a decision, so we just decided not to put anything up. What we talked about during that time, because it is a historical building or it's an older building to Catherine's Point with, uh, it's just older brick and it's got lime-based mortar, we talked about putting up almost like a vinyl piece, it was a, uh, painted on or scrim, screen printed type vinyl with the artist's work, I'm sure you've explored that. Is that not something that's been thought about with these, all these buildings downtown? Because then, if, that, once they start to fade, they can.
For me, that would be way less, uh, the longevity of those is.
Last longer and if we want to take them down, we can put a.
Hang on, just a second, if you're going to ask Christina a question, I need to have her come back. And ask a specific question if you would, because we can't have a, like a discussion like you did with Curtis, okay? This is a specific question.
I think I asked, I asked her a question.
Yes, so if you're talking about vinyl, vinyl is, I guess, more akin to paper than it is to paint. You're going, and especially with a wall in direct sunlight, it's going to fade a lot faster than the paint's going to fade. Additionally, if you're looking to have something handmade and you want it to look like an artist made it, then you're going to want to have it painted. If you want to have something that looks like plastic on the side of your building, you're going to want vinyl. Uh, which is a possibility, you can put vinyl up, um, but that's not the purpose of the mural festival itself. So, it's not something that I did explore, if that was your question.
Yes, and I mean, I like the idea with all the art downtown, that's great, but my concern is the paint peeling on all these different buildings and then we're trying to clean it and these store owners and wall owners aren't going to know what they're cleaning and they're going to hire somebody and it's going to be a bigger mess for them. I just, that, that's my concern, I just seems to me like the vinyl would be an easier marriage to our historical downtown on the walls.
I, I read the concern, um, I don't feel as though you're going to have as many problems as you're foreseeing with these walls. Again, my primary concern was just with the one wall that is already seeing issues with the paint adhering to the wall, um, but with every single other wall, you're, you're going to be in, in it for the long haul with the murals that are going up. They're not going to fade, they're not going to chip, um, and, and if you do see that happening, um, it's not that serious of a problem because if you're going to have to repaint or refurbish a building anyway, for me, I know I've seen John Barrow repaint his building about three or four times, just paint right on over it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Will you sit down, I got a question. When you do this, do you give a guarantee?
A guarantee of what?
Of how long it's going to last.
No, it's just a prediction, so if you look at the can of paint, you're, you're up to ten-year warranty on the paint itself, which is why I give you a ten-year warranty on the mural. Yeah, there's no, there's no written warranty guarantee that you're going to have a ten-year-long mural because I don't know what's under the paint on your building.
And which side the sun's going to shine on and.
Right, but again, you have a ten-year warranty on the exterior paint anyway, so if you have a problem with your mural and you come to me and you say, hey, I have a problem, I'm going to call Sherwin-Williams and talk to them about their warranty and their paint.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for the record, could I have Alderman Apple clarify the locations that he was referring to?
It's the bathroom at, um, Founders Park. It's the side of the building that's the restroom slash concession building at Fourth of July Park and it's a freestanding eight-by-eight plywood sheet, similar to what we have for the Honeybee Festival, that is movable and storable, so it's not in a specific location.
And, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, we, we won't have this information back to the Board in time for her deadline of tomorrow.
Of course. You can take the time it takes to analyze it.
And you said Founders Park just now, but we, we'd also talked about the restroom building at Harmon Park.
I think that was a misstatement, it's Fourth of July Park.
Okay, so it's Founders Park and Fourth of July Park?
Yes.
And then a temporary, okay.
Okay, anything further on this? Thank you for your presentation, good luck with the mural festival and your work with the chamber. All right, item, I guess it's now C, discussion regarding the staffing of the senior botanical garden.
Madam Mayor and Board, you have in your packet a memo, uh, from me to you all regarding the staffing at the botanical garden, uh, kind of long and short of it. If you remember, when we took over the garden, we made some changes to the staffing there. We eliminated some full-time employees, some part-time employees, both inside the event center and outside in the garden itself. So, you know, after a year of operating it, um, we realized that we, we do need one more full-time employee at least in the outside part of the garden. That would still be one less than, than what we had, uh, there when we took it over. So, we do need that employee, currently we are using contract help and it's more than, as you can imagine, costs more than what we can hire that one full-time employee for. So, it'd be half a year, uh, less than a half a year if you hired it now because there's only about four months left in the budget year, then we would roll it in, uh, to that. And this is kind of the plan we had, uh, when we took over the garden. Uh, when we first came to the Board and said, hey, we're, we're going to look at the, the makeup of employees, can we do it with, with layups and whatnot, and we, we still think that we can, um, but we do need, uh, this one full-time employee. We looked at the possibility of making it a nine ninety-nine, which is nine hundred and ninety-nine hours or fourteen hundred and thirty hours. You just can't hire the people to do that, uh, for what we need them to do, they can't work over that many hours, uh, because of state laws. So, what we need them to do, we couldn't, uh, number one, it's hard to hire those folks, number two, uh, we would run short on hours. So, be glad to answer any questions, uh, that the Board may have, I think the memo pretty, pretty well covers it, but be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a, a question or comment, Madam Mayor, and that is that I, I think we need to be intensely cognizant of qualification of who we put in that position, that we not just, you know, that we, be sure that who we put in there is qualified to do what we're asking them to do. And that may sound silly or redundant, but, um, you know, given some concerns that have been expressed, we want to be sure that there's, uh, we fill that with qualified folks.
Yeah, and in this position right now, it's planned to be just a general laborer, working outside in the garden, that would help inside, um, so that's where we're at with it right now. It may be that at some point, uh, some point in the future we come and recommend changing that up, but, you know, it's kind of hard to tell what, uh, what that will be like until we get back into the season, the actual season for the garden.
I understand, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I got a question, uh, you were talking about part-time versus full-time. I'm sure the difference is, you know, the overhead in terms of the full-time employee and the benefits. What's the nine ninety-nine or fourteen?
The nine hundred and ninety-nine is they can just work nine hundred and ninety-nine hours in a year. So, it's less than twenty hours a week. And the fourteen hundred and thirty is they can work fourteen hundred and thirty hours in a year. So, it's roughly a little bit less than thirty hours a week. The nine ninety-nine is really hard to fill, uh, the fourteen thirty we can fill, but with those folks, you still have to do retirement and everything else. So, when you get to that, you're better off going ahead and getting a quality employee going up to the two thousand and eighty hours.
I get you, thank you.
And we've got some of each of those down there, um, in, in the event center side. And we try to schedule them so that they're there for setup, tear down, things like that. Gets difficult, the more events they have, we have some of them in, in the new Parson Rec Event Center as well.
Good deal, thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
What do you need, a motion?
Please.
Okay, I'd make a motion that, uh, Curtis or Ernie or whoever's going to do this could find a good full-time person to work at the garden.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Barrow.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item C, the budget amendment.
This may actually be the shortest budget memo you've ever had. It's got one expenditure change, that's in public services, uh, stormwater fee. We pay a stormwater fee on the property that the town owns, just the same as everyone else. So, we need to, uh, appropriate twelve thousand dollars to cover that and that covers some of the additional properties purchased and also the, uh, Parson Rec Event Center. And that will come, the twelve thousand dollars will come from the fund balance. And then you have, uh, one with the law enforcement forfeiture expenditures for the SWAT. That does not impact the general fund and then the stormwater enterprise fund as well. But all of those are enterprise funds, neither one of those impact, uh, the general fund. And then you have, uh, in a rec center capital project ordinance, that's where the money currently is for the rec center. Um, a net of twelve thousand dollars, we've realized that, good problem, we've realized that we need some more bleachers. Um, had a lot of people standing around at the wrestling tournament, the cheerleading tournament. So, we've got some, uh, bleachers, some vending machines, uh, building furnishings and concession equipment. So, it's basically is what we've done, we moved money from one line item over to that. So, it's a net of twelve thousand dollars and that's also in the capital project.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment number five?
Seven.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item D, about the pool.
Item D is, uh, a resolution for the Board to approve, um, approving the design bid, build or design-build contract method for the community pool. We will put that out as a, as an RFQ, get back bidders on that. They will meet, uh, the criteria that's set out in Exhibit A at the end of that memo. Um, I think there are six of them. And then they will do that and submit their RFQs, it will look at different things, it'll, you know, one thing that we're asking is for them to give us a cost estimate of doing it at Pope Park as well as at Ivy Redmond, doing the pool itself kind of as, as a certain size specs, things like that. So, this is the first step in getting the pool kind of going, we have to have that and then we'll have the estimate come in, the cost estimate come in as well. And then we can take the next steps of actually borrowing the money, going to the LGC and things like that. So, we can't do anything, really, until we get it designed, they are going to require that. So, this is the first step, uh, in doing that. And we do think the design-build method is, something like this is the best way to go.
Okay, are there any questions?
I got one, the design-build method, and you've talked to me about that before. What's the alternative from that and basically how's it work?
The other alternative is construction manager at risk, which we used on the Parson Rec building, is that correct, Ernie? And that's not a, we never found the risk in that except from the town. And then they had the design-bid-build method, which is kind of the same method, it just has one more step in it. You design it, you put it out to bid, then you get contractors bid on it and then they build it. This is they design it and build it all, kind of is one group.
One shot.
Yeah, and I think, which one did we use this on, guys, Doran or Ernie?
Ernie, I can't hear you, can you come forward and speak to the microphone?
Doran, your building was designed bid-build, wasn't it? That's what I thought.
So, the first method we used was Civitans renovation, we did a single prime, which is the, you have a designer, you put out to bid, you get a general contractor. With that method, any change orders, anything that goes wrong, it's on the owner to pay for it. So, all the risk is on you. Uh, the construction manager at risk, in theory, is that you hire a architect and a general contractor at the same time and they work together to cancel out, um, changes or things that they see wrong and then the GC that you've hired gives you a maximum amount not to exceed, therefore you have no change orders. That doesn't work out that great because you have two different, you're, you're the middle man at that point and you're trying to negotiate between two of them or stuff. The bid, uh, design-build, the GC is who you hire and they hire everybody underneath them. So, they're aware, when you get the final cost, that's the final cost, it's on the GC that you fired.
I understand that now.
And I think we did design-build on Beeson's Crossroads Station, didn't we, Chief?
Yeah.
That, we did not, honestly, we did not see a huge advantage to the construction manager at risk. Again, all the risk appeared to be on the town. In theory, it's good, but not so sure it really worked out the way it was said to.
What happened, the reason why I decided, why I pushed for the build, uh, design-build is because of my experience of going through the manager at risk with the building, the GC caught a lot of things that would have cost us more at the end, so they were able to catch it before we got there. And that's where I was like, okay, if we did that, the build-design meth, method, they would have caught that before we even put, pinned the paper on in terms of cost, so.
They should be more accurate in their bid.
Correct, so when they give you, it's going to cost X number of dollars, that's it, that's what they're going to cost.
They, they tell you in that construction manager at risk, they give you a not to exceed price and the first thing they do is exceed it.
Right.
And then tell you, well, this, this wasn't in the, this wasn't in the contract. And I'm like, it's not to exceed, how are we exceeding it? And they always manage to blame it on someone else that left something out, I mean.
I got you, I like, I like you, I like you. And if we need a motion, if there's no more questions, I'll make a motion that we adopt that going forward, the, uh, design-build delivery method.
For the, specifically for the community pool project.
Right, for the pool project, yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Barrow.
Second.
Second by Alderman Apple, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, well, John, you've been talking about a pool for a while now. This is a very, very tangible step towards making that happen. I mean, it's one thing to have it in the budget, it's another thing to talk about it. But when we're getting ready to get bids, that's, that's making it happen, so congratulations. I think that, uh, if we can get this funded, built, opened, staffed and operated, there'll be a lot of children who are splashing and having a lot of fun.
So, you're correct.
That's my point, exactly.
So, just to bring the public up to kind of what Ernie was looking at, he was looking at the potential of showing whoever, uh, you know, is bidding on this, an idea of something that would have a zero entry, so almost being like a splash pad down to, uh, walking into, uh, entry level. So, if your child is, uh, you know, two years old, they can step a foot in this without it being over their head. So, it's not, we're not looking at a pool that starts at three feet deep. We're, we're talking about one that would be appropriate for, um, people of many swimming and abilities and many ages and heights, so. And of course, a deeper end that's bigger, wider with, uh, areas for the older children to enjoy as well, so. And really not like any pool that is currently in Kernersville, so.
Um, and really not like any pool that is currently in Kernersville, so it seems like, uh, there are, uh, some other pools in Kernersville, but there's some capacity issues with how the town has grown so much in recent years that, uh, make the timing of this beneficial for the community. So appreciate your hard work on this, John.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we are now to item E, which is consideration of a contract with Edward L. Powell for services as town attorney. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, you have in your pocket the contract with Mr. Powell. Um, it is in essence the same as the one from last year, with the exception of the, uh, pay that is now set at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars per year. Um, everything else remains the same, he'll be here at least three days a week, uh, on call probably the other four. As I can attest to, he answers the phone if you call him on Sunday, so he's on call the other four. It will retro back to January first of twenty twenty-five, that's when his original contract expired. But as you all remember, the board extended it, uh, last month, and then voted to, if there was a pay increase, to retroact it back to January one.
Mr. Powell, you've done a fine job representing the town, we're happy you're working with us.
I'm very excited to begin my fifth year.
All right, do I have, um, further comments, or do I have a motion?
Time flies when you're having fun, Ed. I'd make a motion that we adopt this contract.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Barrow.
Second.
Second by who, Chris?
Yes.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor. It's unanimous. All right, Mr. Swisher, uh, go ahead, Mr. Powell.
I could thank you and the board for your trust and confidence in me for another year, and I've enjoyed my opportunity, I've had to work with you for the last four years, and I look forward to another fruitful year this year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ed.
All right, that brings us to the town manager's very short report.
It will be very short, I would just like to let you all know, be warned, that the new tax values for property are hitting the mail, and it is not a pretty sight. I've looked at some of the properties I have, my personal house went up eighty-six percent. I had, one property went up a hundred and sixty-one percent, one went up about a hundred and thirty-eight percent. So the residential properties are going up, they are, they are off the charts, uh, every property Keith and I have looked at them, you know, in different areas of town, and the best we can tell, the residential properties are averaging a between forty percent and a hundred and some percent increase. Commercial properties, they don't seem to be as bad, we saw a few commercial properties that actually came down. So when we do the revenue-neutral tax rate, those folks will get a heck of a discount. That leads me to the revenue-neutral tax rate. We're required by law to calculate what that will be. I can tell you now, in all the time I calculate revenue-neutral tax rate, I've never seen it where an increase ranges between twenty percent and a hundred and sixty. So somebody's gonna get hoofed in the deal, I can tell you that. If we adjust the tax rate forty percent, it's not gonna do that person any good, they had a hundred and sixty percent increase in their house, they're still gonna be paying a hundred and twenty percent more than they were. We will, of course, calculate that revenue-neutral rate, but I can tell you now, don't have high expectations for everybody being able to come in and say, I'm paying the exact same thing in taxes that I paid before. Now, the flip side of that, kind of hard to complain, because the values went up to about what properties were selling for. Uh, some of mine that went up close to a hundred percent, that's what they're selling for in that area, so it's hard to complain what the new tax value is, but I can assure you, you will have folks complain about it, because I have no intention of selling their home, and there's no way we can lower the tax rate a hundred percent, because it can be zero. I mean, that just doesn't work. Um, so I thought I would warn you about that, you will probably start getting calls, getting emails. I anticipate some, some chatter on our famous legitimate news Facebook page, Air 411, um, but you all have nothing to do with, with what the assessed value is set at, that is entirely the county. It's the county tax assessor, and he sets the rate, and I don't know, you know, you gotta keep in mind, if something went up a hundred percent here, it's also a hundred percent county, so they're, they're gonna get double duty on that. To make matters a little bit worse, next year is a revaluation in Guilford County. Guilford County has, because they didn't get it right the first time, so they have to do it before six years, so they're doing it next year. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of residential property in Guilford County, but they're estimating it to go up forty percent. What we do have in Guilford County is FedEx and Amazon. If you're footing the tax bill for those two, you can probably look to see a big increase. And we usually do not set that to revenue-neutral, because it's a very small portion of Kernersville, so we, we do try to set for South County as close to revenue-neutral as possible, but we don't do Guilford County, because whatever we drop it to applies for everything in Kernersville. So those folks that are Guilford County citizens in Kernersville, they just have to, they have to bite the bullet and pay up. But just wanted to let you know that, I think they started hitting probably Friday and Saturday today, so you'll start probably getting calls about it. And we are very well aware of it, and looking at what, uh, what some other properties are doing.
Thank you for the update. Any questions? I think I like your longer reports better. Do you have anything else? All right, all right, Mr. Powell.
I'll have just another big thank you to all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, matters to be presented by the mayor and board of Alderman. General Gorman.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I mean, I made my comments a few minutes ago in regards to Lori's request for, uh, trying to find a spot here in Kernersville for the Trees of Valor, but I didn't get any kind of, uh, feeling from the board as what their desire would be to try to bring those trees back to Kernersville. Uh, we had them here for a while in the Pennix Building, so to kind of give you some kind of idea of the size of space that would be needed. Uh, is there any interest, uh, the board in the town of, to try to bring those trees, like those, uh, Trees of Valor back to Kernersville, and if there might be a possible location that we could, uh, explore, look into as far as how we could possibly house those trees, if we had some interest in those trees coming back to Kernersville?
Yes, there is some interest on the part of the board to do that, and I, one comment I would make, General, is that...
Make, could you speak in the mic?
I'm sorry, one comment I would like to make, General, is that Lori, in her presentation, uh, basically was almost apologetic to come and ask us for, you know, i- i- if we joined in her thoughts about it appropriately being in Kernersville. Uh, I think we are the ones who are honored that you would consider Kernersville as placing it, and I, I for one would very much like, uh, uh, in addition to thanking my esteemed colleague, General Gorman, for his role in promoting that, and I really do appreciate that, uh, I think we ought to figure out a way to do that, to the extent that we can legally develop options for doing that. So that may be something that will require some staffing and some legal input, but I'd love for us to explore, Madam Mayor, how we might be able to help in that regard and keep it here, because that really is part of the fabric of what makes Kernersville, Kernersville, I think.
Okay, Mr. Barrow or Mr. Thompson, any thoughts on that?
I'd be interested in seeing what we could do, just, I guess, just a matter of finding the right place for it.
Yeah, I just need to understand exactly what we're talking about.
Mr. Swisher, could you look into this for us?
I'll be glad to, I don't know that, uh, I don't know that the town has any buildings, and it's what it is, Alderman Barrow, is the trees that were in the Pennix Building, uh, the Christmas trees or Trees of Valor, they were decorated with different, uh, veterans on those.
I get it.
Um, I think when Joe sold the building, the trees had to move out, but I can look into it, I don't, I mean, the town doesn't have any property that the town itself owns where they could go, but I'll be glad to, to check and see if there's any property owners somewhere, um, that might have some property that they would be willing to, to let them go in. Um, probably find a warehouse, but I don't know that she wants them just displayed in a warehouse somewhere. Um, but that would, you know, I can see what's there, what's available, I would suggest maybe that she worked with, with Chris at the chamber, she probably has more contacts, if not as many, of, of folks that have open properties in town as well.
Lori, Lori, um, could you come to the podium so we can all hear you? I, I'm curious, are you looking for a place to store the trees, or a place to display the trees?
Um, like, the building beside the post office, it's been empty and like an eyesore for years, right? Literally, there's nothing in it, um, would be a great place, because what we discovered is that in every other town that we have these, except for Burlington, um, we just use phantom windows, we popped them in the wind, in the windows, and then they serve the community by veterans being able to see them, right? But here in Kernersville, we were hoping to do what we do in Burlington, which is have a place where, you know, you have a whole American Legion here that doesn't have a building. They have to meet in a church once a month for breakfast, they, they don't have a building. So the VFW does, but that's, you have to be a member of the VFW, right? So there's a lot of veterans in this community that would love to have a place to meet, and so in Burlington, we literally have a whole, we call it, you know, for the veterans in the room, we call it the common area, where there's a place where they can sit and hang out in a little tiny area with a microwave and a curate that says mess hall, right? It's literally for them to just come and be together, because there's a lot of healing in that for them. So if I could find someplace like that, which, like, that kind of place, this beside the post office, um, and I went in town today, and that building that's been empty, because I tried to inquire about that in the past, there's no phone number, there's no email, it's just an address, but somebody has to know, I mean, you can't have real estate, right, that there's no way to figure out who has it, right? So that, that's, that's our, our goal, is to serve the veterans and the families of the fallen in the community, um, by them not just seeing the trees in a window, which is nice, if that's the best I can get, I'll, I will take that. But if I can actually serve the community and the ton of veterans you actually do have here, um, I think that would be a great service. The other thing that we realized is, you know, a lot of schools in North Carolina no longer teach history. So what we just started at the gallery is, um, homeschool groups, um, and, um, charter schools have started contacting us, and they want to bring their kids into the gallery, and we have veterans set up, because it's, imagine a hundred trees, right? I, I should have showed the video for that, but there's a hundred trees there of every wartime, and so there'll be a veteran at every single area, and the kids will literally walk through there and get taught by the veterans in, you know, of that specific time period. Um, scouting groups are coming in to get their volunteer, you know, get their badges and such, you know, that just is starting. So it serves a lot of different purposes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Apple? Mr. Barrow?
I got a couple of, a couple of things. Uh, I was talking to, I forget who it was, somebody in town here that, uh, suggested that maybe we need to be looking at having a Frisbee park. Do you know anything about that, Ernie? Frisbee course? And they advised me, they said, oh, that's, that's been around a long time, and it's really getting popular, so just, you know...
Was it Frisbee golf or...
Frisbee golf, yeah. So I mean, just, you know, just think about it, let's, I mean, let's think on it and look at what's going on, and, uh, you know, it might, might be something we want to look at in the future.
Thank you.
That's the one thing. The other thing was Chief, uh, several people called me in the last two or three weeks about wrecks in town, and then the police coming in and blocking everyone but one, and you know, it's nothing terrible, but it just, you know, blocks up the traffic, a lot of times the worst time, and they, they'll call me up and go, why do they do that? And I says, I don't know, I'm not a policeman, you know? But I'm sure y'all have a protocol, and, uh, the way it all, you know, the way things are handled, if it's, I know a lot of places, uh, not North Carolina, but other places, and it says, if you have a, a crash and nobody's hurt, and it's tore up real bad, pull off the road and get out of the way, and, uh, we don't seem to do that here.
Yes, our, our goal is for, number one, for make sure the people who are injured get taken care of.
Right.
And number two is to clear the roadway.
Right.
And we try to do that. Sometimes you can't, if the vehicle is not movable, we have, we're at the mercy of the tow trucks and things like that, but we'll definitely talk about being efficient on, on traffic crashes.
And, and people did tell me some good things, too. They said that they saw some policemen out sweeping stuff off the road. I said, that's great, I really like that, and, uh, and that's a good thing.
I appreciate that. We, we try to make sure that, uh, actually, uh, Dorn and his guys, we talked about that last couple of days, about crashes and making sure that the debris gets picked up out of the road. We're, we're working together on that.
I've had several people compliment the Kernersville Police Department on that, but anyway, thank you, Chief. That's all I got.
Okay, what you got, Chris?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. All right. Appreciate everyone joining us for this meeting, and I want to send out word wishes to all the fathers and daughters who managed to get tickets to the annual father-daughter dance. What year are we at, Ernie? The twenty-second annual father-daughter dance, for the first time held in the brand-new rec center, so I hope everyone has a great and safe evening, and the weather makes it a fantastic event. So thank you for, in advance, for your staff, for all their work planning, decorating, and making a magical evening, it's very much appreciated. All right, uh, is there anything else for this evening? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, and a second by Alderman Gorman, all in favor? It's unanimous. And Joe, we hope you feel better and come back and see us at the next meeting.